I've worked like glass.
Yeah, I'd like to welcome everyone to a work meeting that we've got on August 8th, Leestown Hall. And it is 6:08. Roll call, starting with Joe.
Joe Allen.
Nate Lake.
Alan Roberts. I've heard from Frank via telephone that he will be a little bit late. I haven't heard anything from Angie. Since it's a work meeting, however, let me, let me explain. Since it's a work meeting, technically you don't have to have a quorum because you're not conducting any action type items. The advantage with having the others here, they interact and hear everything. That's what work meetings are about, but sometimes that doesn't happen. So, we want to get started right off. Nate, Joe, you have had a chance to look at this draft development agreement?
Yes.
With Grapevine. I'm thinking that the best way to start this is just, let's go to page one. Do you have a copy of that?
I, I did bring it with me.
Do you have it in electronic format? You should, if you have any emails that you have received thirty days ago, would have came to you in electronic format.
Development agreement. And if you get my email, maybe, if you're not, we can forward it on because I got a draft just today, it said, "Commander, please talk."
That's where this came from?
Yeah.
This, the one that you have and this one, it better be the same thing. I can't imagine there was anything drafted.
Yeah.
I don't know whether, I don't know whether you guys have looked at that, the first draft that had come out back in March, April, whenever it did. I would ask that if you recall any language that was in that, to keep in mind that that draft is not even on the bill at this point. The one you have in front of you is the one we did.
Do you want to take this one page at a time?
Well, I would like to just take it one page at a time. And as far, more than likely, the wherethes will probably...
Am I on the right page here?
Do you need to go back to your email?
Anything you can talk to that June?
The end of June. On that first page, while we're looking for that, Joe?
Yep.
Did you have?
Have any comments or questions about the first page? It's pretty straightforward. Just definitions.
On the first page, Drake, one thing that I have, a couple of things, but where it talks about developer owns approximately 370 acres, do we have it exact or is that?
We do in the legal descriptions that are attached to exhibits. Yeah, they're all even there describing our show.
Should have one that specifically with your name on it. May?
Yeah.
May 24th? Yeah. No, no. It will be the end of June or the first part of July.
I think he's getting it for you.
Okay.
Then the 7th of July, maybe.
Down on the bottom on that first page where it says... "The final approval contemplated the establishment of a local district and conceptually..." I've got a note here that, and I think this is just discussion between us. It's very important to understand that this is conceptual. "Approve the development plan and pattern book." Now, of course, that was talking about the annexation agreement. That's, that's important that we understand that the, the development plan and pattern book that they provided at that time, that we agreed with the conceptual ideas of it. And that's, and of course, that's where, we're through the process of trying to get down to the nuts and bolts of what that, those conceptual plans are. And they will still be somewhat conceptual because they're not going to be a specific building design at the time we're looking at this agreement. This agreement is not going to say, here's the actual building and the way it looks. Here's conceptual, the way that these buildings are. And to continue with that, "Conceptually approve the development plan and pattern book, among other things." That seems pretty vague now. Do we know what that all entails?
Yeah, we, I mean, we have the agreement. It's already entered into between the developer and the town. Um, yeah, so that's already been entered into, it's recorded, and so all of those, among other things, are just the public's view. I mean, everyone can go in there and see what those other things are. Also, just a quick note, and I'm sure you all understand this, all the wherethes in agreements are kind of like background, kind of to get up to why, why we're entering or even contemplating entering into that. So, but anyway, yeah, those, among other things, are all of that agreement.
The reason I ask, just like the acres down there, I'm quite confident that the public will come up and say, 370 acres, that's what you have? No. That's approximately 370. That's why I ask. The legal description shows what the actual... Okay, we're on page two. Unless you have... Down in the middle on the wherethes, when it's talking about the mixed zone, mixed zoning ordinance, when it talks about square footage limitations, setbacks, that type of stuff. That's the existing mixed use zone that exists now.
So that means a lot of documents are sent?
Hopefully the documents will be attached, which we're still reviewing, like cross-section and all those other things.
That's a good point, Mayor. I just thought of something that we may want to add, just to make sure that we're all on the same page. Since that development annexation agreement was entered into in 2009, late last year, the town council, based on the planning commission's recommendation, amended that land use chapter. And so, I'm just wondering if we, we may want to maybe do comma as amended, you know? Because that, that allowed us the flexibility to even approach the town with additional design standards. You don't bother with that?
See what I'm saying?
Yeah. I think that's a fair thing. I just thought of it.
Can we go to page three?
I have nothing on page three.
Just made, just some highlights at the bottom on page four. Where it describes what's in the final development plan, what it consists of. Now, I understand, Drake, that you're keeping any changes from what the original master plan book and the original exhibits, because there are some changes from what the originals were. And you're keeping track of that, so at some point, you're going to present, you're going to present what those actual exhibits and master plan books are, that will accompany all of this. I understand that you don't, it wouldn't be, wouldn't be realistically, realistic to ask the applicant, now, what, you've got to go back and review all of those.
Every time we talk, right? What I've been doing, based on all the conversations and discussions we've been having, as I've been redlining, like you say, those original documents, for example, those documents included gravel references to parking areas on our roadways, and I've already taken that out. I think I, did I send you a redlined copy?
Well, you showed me, so...
Yeah, so, anyway, that's, that's kind of the same understanding we come to with staff, is that, let's go through all of these discussions and we'll have a redlined version that we'll work through with staff and make sure we've captured everything that we can.
Does that make sense to us here? Page five. I've just got a large highlight on that, 2.2.6 on the traffic mitigation plan, but that's still something that we're working on at this point.
Section 3.1.
Yeah.
With respect to all public infrastructure, future raising of development is dependent on the adequacy of available infrastructure capacity at the time. Do we have anywhere within this that says what that, what that infrastructure has to be, or is it a little bit vague?
Each, each utility, each utility would be providing for that development.
Okay.
As, and Grapevine has the copy, and so does Leeds. Leestown has a copy from each one of those utilities, saying, yeah, we will service this development.
Okay.
And any type of upgrades or increase in whatever will be the burden of the development.
Well, and Joe, just another point to your question, which is a great question. What 3.1 really is, is kind of an introduction sentence to the rest of the several pages. You can see there's a 3.2 with a Natalisized Public Safety, then there's a 3.3 Public Infrastructure, and then it's specific to sewer, water, and gas, and telecom. So, that sentence is really just kind of a, hey, we need to have capacity, and then the specifics go, come in the next several pages.
Got it. And then also just that adequate, well, it's, a lot of it is state standard, so you have to sort, there's some standards in terms of capacity lines, and flow, and water, you know, water pressure. Maybe your water pressures can't drop below a certain level. So those will be, you know, the absolute minimums. You don't have to have something beyond that.
Would it be unreasonable to amend this and say, and define what adequacy is, in accordance with state standards?
I, that's absolutely reasonable. I have no issue with adding, or maybe tweak, changing instead of adequacy, or maybe adequacy of available infrastructure based on standards.
There you go. As state and national...
City, state, state, local.
State and city standards.
Because as they go through phases, this development could also be on spectrum outside.
Well, and we can't even turn a dirt until the plans themselves are approved, right? So, no, it'll be safe, but now that's a fine suggestion.
Gas on roof?
Yeah.
Probably kids out.
What, what, I mean, we're absolutely fine adding that language because you'll see with each of these kind of subcategories that we, we address, they all, I mean, I just quickly looked, they're all based on town standards and specs, but hey, we're not, nothing bad about reentering again.
Can we move on to the next page?
Yeah.
So once we get through this draft agreement, before anything further takes place, there'll be a, there'll be a final platform review.
All right. Yeah, there'll be multiple, I mean, all, what, what this development agreement does is it sets the rules of the game.
Yeah.
And then whenever we're ready to develop, or even do a road to get to where we want to develop, every one of those steps will be back to the town for plan approval and acceptance and all that.
And does that come through to the council as well?
It, it depends on what it is. Every application, everything that Grapevine or any developer, even when a development agreement is established, once that developer decides, okay, I'm going to pull the trigger and actually start this, they have to come in for applications and run through the process for everything, like, like any other development would have. And some of that, some of that process comes through the planning commission and, and town council. Some of that process is just a staff level process as far as applications. It just depends on, you know, what, what application under they...
You know, knowing city, city, when you have development, we'd actually have a staff meeting with Crestar Gas, Rocky Mountain Power, and the city engineer, building inspectors, and we, group of, well, 15 of us at the table. And that's when we go through this agreement. But then once this agreement went through, went through, and of course, went to the city council. Then at that point, all the development at that point was, was the city engineer, joint building inspector. I don't know what, what you're supposed to do with that.
Probably eighty or ninety percent of the development will be going through, at some point, because everything's going to require a subdivision plat.
Yes.
Or a site plan. And so you've got a subdivision plat, you're going to have to, you know, review, and those going to be road dedications, which the council has to approve, all of it, you know, and once you get through the subdivision plats, you're going to have additional permits for single trailer homes, and that's probably the building inspector you have to manage.
The Leeds ordinance is required, thanks to your point about meeting with all the joint utilities and so... The Leeds subdivision ordinance requires that an applicant meets with an established JUC, a joint utility committee, at each step. And so, we, we wouldn't be end running them, I mean, when we wanted to start our first phase, I would expect, you know, getting in touch with staff, they would organize a JUC meeting, we'd come and present our plans, we'd have any, you know, concerns addressed, and then we'd come to the planning commission, and then, you know, once we get through that, we'd come back to the town council. So, it, it goes through that whole normal process.
So, as phases go through, as each phase goes through, that's when it comes through us, and you go to utilities, and then goes climbing, and then comes to...
It's the same process like every town, city, district?
I just know that.
Yeah, this, this agreement...
They would take an app, Washington, they all, they all play a little different.
Yeah, but this agreement does not negate any of the process for plats, for site plans...
Give him a thumbs up to say...
It just gives him...
It gives us a thumbs up to...
It, it gives the rules to play by.
Yeah, yeah.
And you'll find that most of those rules...
They're current in the plans, but...
Are the rules we have. There's, there's a few that they've asked for, and, I mean, that, that still has to be resolved on some of those, there's a few rules that they've asked that are a little bit different. Uh, what, on 3.3, talking about sewer, I got a note here, Drake, and I've asked you this, or mentioned it to you a while back, and I know what your answer was then. And I'm not sure that the, the development agreement, whether or not it needs to say that. I have written down here, reuse. And that, that's something that Leeds is very supportive of reuse. But depending on how the sewer happens, may not allow for that reuse as far as you as an applicant or your local district. Because, an example, if, if you guys were to be managed by Ash Creek, or tie in with Ash Creek, that wouldn't allow a reuse here, because that reuse will go down to where it is at.
So... I guess we don't know, there's a lot of unknowns.
There are some unknowns there, I, I just...
I guess what I would point to, as far as reuse goes, is that second sentence in 3.3.1, the sewer system must be approved by the town and comply with town standards. So at that point in time, when we've actually, you know, settled in on preferred technology, and we have plans, and we're like, here, town, this is, you know, our sewer system that we'd like to implement, and the town has an interest in requiring reuse, that, you know, the system has to be approved by the town. So, I don't know from my perspective that it's necessary to address reuse in this agreement, understanding though that the system, the ultimate system that's approved is approved by the town.
Do we do a reuse, especially if that's standing or...
It's neat, it's, it's, I mean, there's a lot of neat things about it from a developer's perspective, it's just, it's more or less tied together by two.
That is neat.
Because, you know, the face value, I have interest in it too, but from a cost perspective, I just see double dollar signs, and so I'm like, ah.
Yeah, it's not cheap. We live in a desert. If we lived in Seattle, we wouldn't have the, have this conversation.
Was there anything else on page six?
No.
Page seven, it says there's a section 3.2.2, it talks about water. Second sentence on page seven, town agrees to provide water to the project is set forth in the corner in a water agreement between the town, Leeds, and Washington County Water Conservancy District. I'm not familiar with that agreement. What exactly are we agreeing to here by provide water to the project?
The town is the water purveyor, and they have the ability to wholesale water.
Okay.
From, they, they get the water from the conservancy wholesale, and then we can retail water to anyone.
Okay.
And so that's what it's referring to. That just, that just simply means that the, we acknowledge that they can, that development can be served water through the town via the conservancy.
But we're not talking about town putting in infrastructure to get the water, then we're talking about the rights that the town can acquire for, have, to use.
Everything, everything within the development is the burden of the developer. If there were any infrastructures that were put in by the developer that would be considered system, then that burden is up on the town or to give impact credits to whomever pays for that. So, if it's a system improvement, then the town, that is a town burden. If it's within the development, that is the developer's burden.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe there is a water line, Washington County Water Line in Main Street, or...
Correct, there is. There is. One thing that, and Joe, you may not know, because you haven't been here when some of that took place, as far as the boundary alignments that took place between us and Toperville. The conservancy owns some property that is adjacent to Grapevine's property. And on that property is three wells that are capped off. Okay, of course, the conservancy, not just with Grapevine, but wherever makes sense for a corridor, for that piping, they're interested in where a corridor would live. And so I know that they have had some discussion with Grapevine on possible easements for, you know, that piping corridor to come up out of there. On page eight.
I have nothing on eight.
Page nine. On page eight, as far as...
No, probably aggressively gone there.
Well, in this, in this agreement, there's, in this agreement, at one point in time,
there will be a bond or some sort of a letter credit put, put in place per phase.
That's not in this agreement.
Never, never read that in this agreement.
We've discussed it. Does it need to be in this, I mean, it needs to be in this agreement?
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I guess, maybe Nate, maybe, maybe you can clarify your question. As I understand, in the, in the Leeds current subdivision ordinance, whenever someone comes to have a final plat approved and therefore, or they're after reported, they're required to bond for that. So that's already in the Leeds ordinance.
They'll get a bond for it.
So that's something that doesn't need to be in here then?
No, because it's stated in here numerous times that they have to follow, they have to follow what Leeds ordinance is.
Sorry to interrupt.
Unless it's just...
No, ask the question. Just a few, a few bases on this thing, and I read through it, that's a good question.
That's exactly what this work session is for, is to...
Yeah, and like I said, like, I think you and I had a conversation, Maggie, girl, and I had the same conversation as well.
Page nine.
Uh, nothing on page nine.
That's where I would expect some, especially on that reimbursement part of the agreement. And I do have comments or some things under mine on page 10. So on page 10, which would be the last sentence in 5.2, "If the final accounting of costs and the final proportionate share of costs approved by the town is different from the estimates that were originally approved, then the reimbursement agreement shall be deemed amended, and the impact fee credit shall be established based upon such final approval." Does that automatically amend the reimbursement part? I guess that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
That's what it reads. And what that means is if, if we, or the town engineers, were contemplating some type of a project that includes system improvements, and the engineer's estimate that the town accepts or approves is a hundred grand, but we actually build it, and the actual accounting, the final costs are 150, it just means that the credit is for what's actually expended, not what was estimated.
Does that leave the door open for the opportunity to reuse that system?
Well, what I like in there is...
Not, not that you would, but the lawsuit's going to be...
Based upon the final approval by the town. So I think that that verbiage there says, it's based upon the final approval by the town.
The last sentence, the last big word.
Yeah, the last few words of that.
So, as you're concerned, you know, we're going, the engineer's estimates been presented, approved by the town, we're actually in... approved by the town, we're actually in throes of construction, and we want to deviously kind of bump up some numbers and be dishonest, you want to have a check and balance on that.
Yeah.
So I think with the, based on such approval, the town covers that. I mean, it's not something that you just take our word for, but you would have to approve what we would submit as expenses.
The town's going to have good documentation, it's, okay, why did that cost a hundred and ten instead of a hundred? But then it's still our approval.
Can you read this and get the language straight in my head for a second here?
And then they allocate the reimbursement service impact fees, nevertheless, it's town obligated to come to cash.
Yeah.
And so developers have risk because the impact fee credits are larger than the impact fees they pay. You're not generating much impact fee otherwise. So they can spend a lot of money, their impact fees will be based on what they're, they're largely spend, you know, unless you have a lot of, unless you have sudden building boom in town, you're not generating a lot of impact fees, so, so that's all your risk. You're giving them credits for system impact, which is, you know, fair.
Yeah, like you're saying, unless there was a sudden boom, they could spread them out along very tight, and they're...
Yeah, the payback's going to come slow.
Good.
Comes slow.
So at no time, whether now or in the future, 20 years to come, would Leeds ever come to pay in cash to reimburse?
That's what the agreement says in a couple of different places. And I read that here, it's, it's actually, it's specifically safe, the town obligated to come up with cash, you know, to reimburse them strictly the impact fee credits. And we can probably find that, let's see, it's... It's in this next section on page 10.
I'm still on that last sentence, though. I'm trying to wrap my head around what, based upon such final approval by the town is, is final approval when all the final accounting of costs comes in as in the, and is it the town that's doing that final accounting, or is it developer submitting a bill? This is what we actually spent?
It's the developer that's going to be submitting what was actually spent.
And that automatically is approved, is what I'm understanding is?
Only on the town's approval. The impact fee credit shall be established based upon such final approval by the town.
All right, is the word such, does that kind of throw you?
Yeah.
I wonder, I mean, really, I mean, because, yeah, what the intent is, is not to, I mean, that's a good, that's a fair concern. If we can change the word such to just the, based upon the final approval by the town...
Or we can just get rid of it.
Oh, yeah, let's just get rid of it. If you, if such is making you think it infers kind of like an automatic approval or something, I'm fine deleting that word.
There's just one, some way we could get in here that says the town has to approve all these expenses before impact fee credits are issued.
Yeah, because, because if the developer, not, not the developer, but the actual physical excavator out there doing the work knows that the town of Leeds is going to be paying for this portion, it's automatically...
He has, he has no incentive because he won't get any impact.
No, he won't get any impact fee credits, but, but he could just, I'm just saying, oh, like, you know, this is what the city's responsible for, so, you know.
Yeah, no, you're, you're, you're right, so, I mean, and, and, and they're all, all the ones I've worked, but, you know, they're straight up, but I'm just saying that are some guys out there that could possibly be evangelists. I mean, if the, if the town had concern in its full right to go and check all the numbers, you know, they, they can get on the phone and if X, Y, Z excavating, charging three bucks a yard, and the town, whoever you have doing it, maybe it's the town's engineer is reviewing the actual costs, and they're seeing an invoice that we're, that we've submitted, they're like, boy, that's a weird town, they're, this excavator that Grapevine's hired is charging three bucks a yard, but the going rate in town we all know is a buck fifty, I'm just using numbers here. Then you're like, oh, red flag, and then you go, I mean, the town has every right to confer.
Yeah.
And then come back and say, you know what, your numbers are way out of line. We've, we've established that that's not correct, and so we won't approve more than this, you know, whatever.
Not honestly, anybody would do that, I'm just trying to cover all the bases.
Well, but that's, I understand, that's why we have agreements, because we, there are folks that have, that have it in.
Yeah.
Would it be sufficient just to strike that word such?
Not necessarily, I think if I add a sentence that says equal ridge beyond the original accounting, uh, not that it, I'm trying, working at this out loud here, but not that it's automatically approved, but that in the town's sole discretion, town have reserved
Sole reasonable.
Yeah, reserves the right to review that accounting. That would be added to section 5.2.
Yeah, the very end sentence there. We, that's the intent, so I'm fine adding that language. If we want to write in black and white, you know, the town's sole reasonable discretion, which could include, you know, reviewing the numbers or whatever you just said, totally fine with that.
Sure, okay.
The nice thing, if I could maybe just add one quick comment to that, last comment to that concern, Joe, the nice thing about this is we will have, we will have already established an estimate, which should have unit prices, so really, what in reality would maybe be an over ridge or an under ridge, I don't think under ridge is a word, I just made it up, would probably be on quantities, you know what I mean? And the town and then the developer will have already agreed more or less on unit prices, and so it'll be like, oh, you know, there was more bill than we had expected. And so, but then the town wants to verify that, so.
Still on page 10, under six. Maybe the second sentence, first one's long.
In each instance?
Second sentence, developer shall also be given an impact fee credit for land dedicated to and accepted by the town for system improvements. What all would that include, do you suppose? Drake, I mean, and I don't, I, I don't think that the, I don't know that the agreement has to spell every single thing, but when we're talking about impact fee credits for the land that's dedicated to a system improvement.
Yeah, um, well, the example might be the development itself require, and I just, you know, this is just for example's sake, the development itself may require a 66-foot rideaway, um, but the town may want to make it, you know, a much bigger, heavier used facility, and so they come and say, hey, Grapevine, instead of a 66, we do an 80-foot. That 14 extra feet could be land dedicated to the town for a system improvement, so the market value of that extra footage.
So that's on, that's, that's the town's discretion, whether or not...
Require that or not exactly.
We're all looking at, we're all looking at land or property for parks as a system.
That, that would be too, that's another good example, parks improvements, the acreage for that is a great example. And all one example in Washington City that the acreage is included as a system improvement.
And that's where being able to define, you know, parks as an example, maybe having kind of an overall plan of what are the system improvements, i.e. community-wide or region, citywide versus their project improvements. So neighborhood park, the really benefits just Grapevine wash, then that's not system improvement, probably not, but, you know, that maybe should be spelled out in the, and I don't know if the police have like a parks master plan?
It has an impact fee study, that's, that's where it should be.
Yeah, we do have that. Impact fees thing, and that developed fine, because these languages, you know, it's, it says system improvements and project improvements, that have the meaning as, I mean, in the state impact fee statute, I have a copy of, basically, the system improvements is a citywide improvements. You can't ask the developer to build you a, you know, park that's intended for the entire town. So that, that impact, maybe we'll have to refer back to your park impact, park capital facility plan, just so down below, there's not misunderstanding of, they build a park, and you can say, oh, that's your neighborhood park, and they may say, well, that's town, city park, you know, just so that...
Well, we're benefited by, each time we go into one of these improvements, we'll have the opportunity to negotiate a reimbursement agreement. And so we'll say, this portion is project, this is system, and so it won't be a yes, I mean, it'll be very defined at that time.
Yeah, I like that.
It's all subject to the town. Okay, so that, so, so if they decided, they decided we could give up, let's say, two tenths of an acre, some small piece that really unused by the town of Leeds for a park system, you know, that, that would be simple, come to us and we'd be able to...
You'd have to accept it, you'd have to accept it as a designation.
So on this agreement, we're not agreeing to that at this point, that would be totally different.
As we get down there a little bit further, just below that, the amount of credit shall be equal to the lesser of I, double I, and it's on the double I, the reasonable and verified cost of the system improvement paid by the developer, and the fair market value of the land at the time of dedication. So that fair market value of the land at the time of dedication be the fair market value as an improved, whatever that improvement was, or...
Well, if I were the town, I wouldn't want it to be considered improved.
Neither would I.
As a developer, I would like it to be...
I know, that's why I asked the question.
That's a good, that's, I mean, from my perspective, that should be unimproved, that's fair.
I would think so.
It would be fair for the town to have the value of approved.
So you could say fair market value of the unimproved land?
Right.
I would like to include or insert a word there that designates the unimproved.
That's only fair, that's a good, good explanation.
I was done with 10. You know, I think you did, just through, this is probably some of the section I'm referring to, bottom of page 10, it says, in no instance shall the town be required to reimburse developer for system improvement constructed and installed by developer in any form, in any other form than category-specific impact fee credit. And then at the, and then at the last, very last sentence on 10, it says, likewise, the town will not give cash reimbursements under any circumstances unless agreed to and expressly written reimbursement agreement, section 5.5, so.
I read that.
Yeah. So there, you know, it's, you're given, you're given impact fee credits for improvements that are being to be of citywide benefit.
You'll have section 11, which is seven, I'm wondering if I... None of these were numbered.
Okay, page 11. I have nothing on page 11.
Uh, I'm just wondering, section seven is, I'm sure intentionally there, about patents and blue impact fees. Is there a reason that we're not committing to, to do this concept as a, specifically applying toward a freeway interchange?
And since the town and developer may agree, they're in blue impact fees, totally. You know, it's kind of...
It leaves you an option there.
Leaves you an option.
Well, we're, just so you understand the intent of that section, and I think we've maybe brought this up in a time, in other meetings in the past, but this was our intent to kind of help frankly, the town, because understanding that impact fees, based on the state law, have terms, they have an expiration date of, I think, about six years, that in some ways may hurt the town, because at the end of six years, if you haven't actually put them to use, I, as a developer, can write you a letter and say, dear town, we respectfully request the refund of however many impact fee monies because you haven't used them in the time period allotted by state law. So because of that, and given the nature of our development envisioned over many, probably many decades, we thought, you know what, let's throw this out to the town. It's, the use of the term may is in here because we haven't really gotten any feedback from the town to date. And so, but we, we felt like this would be a nice agreement to get away from the expiration of impact fees, to also make sure from, from our perspective, that the fees that we contribute to the town aren't used, you know, you know, across town, so to speak, that they're used on some things that would help us. And so anyway, it seemed to be a win-win option.
I'm just wondering if we should, I mean, because we talked a whole lot about, one of the ways to mitigate turning Main Street to a busy, busy road, by lane road, is to, you know, we want to all want to push for a freeway interchange or something, so why not put into our agreement that a percentage of these impact fees are going to go toward, you know, a fund that town leads to use to, you know, to assist with that freeway interchange or to give to UDOT?
Frankly, that was the motivation why we came up with this. Because we were thinking of Main Street, and right now, if you read the Leeds Roadway Capital Facilities Plan, which is effectively your rulebook of what you can use impact fees for, nowhere in that is a, is any reference to Main Street. And so right now, if you were to charge an impact fee for Main Street, if someone could contest that.
Yeah, we could not, we could not charge an, an impact fee.
Exactly.
It's not a system that we own.
Exactly, and that's why I think we ought to eliminate the vagueness of this paragraph and put it in writing that we're going to be charging a fee for Main Street and we'll need that fee that the town would use to, at its discretion, to either for the Main Street or to donate to UDOT for that interchange.
The only reason that I would be apprehensive about that, because if we put it in black and white for one developer, then it is to be in black and white for any developer. And I don't know whether any developer would agree to that, because we need to treat them all equally. This way, with, with the may in there, it's just saying Grapevine says they're willing to do that. But, and I can pick on Rick Sant because he's here. That, that means that we look at Rick Sant and say, now, Rick, hey, in the future, you know, you're going to be paying some, you know, fees in lieu of impacts, you know, deal with this road because your development has potential to increase the traffic on the road too, or simplest property, or, I'm not saying it's a bad thing.
Sure.
I'm just saying if we pull the trigger and put it as a definite.
But what happens, you know, thinking of, what happens if Grapevine goes bankrupt, we go through another recession, and there's no money at that point to, to donate to the town as a fee in lieu of impact fee. And now we're at a build-out point where we need the infrastructure, we need a freeway on that, and we're stuck with the problem. I'm not saying that will happen, it could be a possibility.
Well, yeah, we have, Grapevine went bankrupt at what point?
Well, let's say we've, we've done some build-out, we've hit a point where the town needs new infrastructure, we've got a traffic issue mainly, and we know what economic factors we'll get, and all of a sudden, the money that's Asian setting aside gets spent elsewhere.
Well, the money's, the town...
It can, it would be, you would have it, but no, in the town account.
But I'm saying that...
Because they're going to pay up for each building.
In nowhere in our, in this agreement does it say this is what you have, it says we may agree.
On, on, uh, payments in lieu of impact?
Yes.
Once it's an impact, it's an impact, it's a done deal, it's going to go for whatever that specific impact fee was. that specific impact fees was, was collecting. There's a saying something in lieu of impact fees.
Yes, I understand that. And the intentions are good, but I'm just wanting to finally solidify those intentions and answers, you know, make that a legitimate decision.
Well, you know, Joe, I appreciate the intent outside the box. My concern is that we're probably running into is, we're trying to solve problems that we don't know exist, and what we should do is set a standard of saying, the Main Street is going to be at this limit number of cars going down it, and that becomes the developer's responsibility of how they're going to mitigate the situation we need to fill the project they have. But if we try and put money towards an interchange, the state's going to say, well, great, you're working on that, but you decide we're going to put an interchange someplace else, and we get enough money, we can do that, well, then, there we are. We're just, we're caught. And I think we just need to have the town move forward and set a standard of what we're going to expect of all the developers, and not try and be creative. And I, I like the idea you're thinking out of the box, and I appreciate that, and that's what we need to do, but I'm a little concerned that we would be making decisions for future councils that have to decide to deal with some of those issues. So I'd, I'd rather just stay on course, try to stay with our, our policies and our regulations and our plans and all, everything else that's in the minutia of all of our ordinances, and try and focus that way. Then that means the developer can see financially what's available. I don't, I don't want to give them the rose-colored glasses and they think, okay, this is what's going to happen, and then we're down the road and we're going, we can't do it, and they can't do it, and now we just pass, and then we sack.
But we've got, we've gotten in place, there's going to be a cap on building permits.
Right.
Unless that additional, unless we have that freeway on, which essentially will go on terms. So, and developers already said that if we're willing to contribute in lieu of impact fees, the amount that we were going to spend to improve Main Street to those five lanes can apply that toward the freeway on ramp.
That's what I, you know, I'm. I, I just can't, I can't, I can't see that happening with the boss or ramp being sold. What would the amount be? Because it would be very large.
Well, the contribution would be, as I understand it, what we discussed would be equal to the cost associated with taking Main Street as it is today and, and bringing it to what your engineer recommended for the five lanes. And is there a cost estimate out there for what that is, or is that just totally conceptual at this point?
There hasn't been any study done on that, and that would change from, if you've done one now, it's the time that it may have to happen, that cost would be all indifferent. But here's the risk the developer's taking, the risk, if you talk about setting Santa for Main Street, L O S C, which can't, like, maybe that'd be a bad way to hit. When the town hits that, whoever's first come, first served on capacity, then your building permits, you can kind of all compel alternative routes to develop to the interchange. Interchanges are costly and guaranteed when they get built, so it's a big risk that, you know, at some point, that comes about, that, you know, project type just goes into a holy pattern, or they figure out another way to act. That's a good, good risk for the, good risk for Grapevine to take on. That's kind of where it's headed. I like the language here because if we do it another way, Joe, it's going to force us to require every developer. Because we can't single out one developer unless they say may, unless they specifically say, okay, we agreed to that, you're agreed. And then we say, yeah, you, yeah, we still may. That, that's the only reason that I'm apprehensive about that.
Well, let's approach the subject of requiring every developer to contribute to this in lieu of impact fee to find for Main Street. Reality is, Main Street is a uniqueness to, to the town leads. It's just the fact that we have a split interchange that belongs to UDOT, that we cannot collect an impact fee on it. Otherwise, we would be collecting road impact fees for it from every developer. So why not have every developer?
Because as a developer, if I was a developer, I would contest it because I would say, you can't do that unless I agree to it. You can't force me to do it because you don't own the, the roadway, therefore you can't, you can't collect an impact fee or any other type of fee that's in lieu of an impact fee. The reason that they use the verbiage in lieu of is because it allows you to, to not be limited to that six-year period for an impact fee. So a developer would contest that. And they would have a strong understanding. The only way that they couldn't contest it, if they willingly agreed to it, and that's what Grapevine's doing in this contract they have.
Well, no, no, it's not in this agreement, they're saying that they might or may agree to it. And I understand that that's.
They're willingly agreeing that, that they.
Well, that's the intent, but what I'm reading is saying that we may agree at, and in my mind, I think at, in some, at some future point.
Yes.
We might agree to this. And what I'm wanting to do is to, in this development agreement, say, yeah, we committed to it, this is our good faith effort to solve the problem.
I, I don't like to go and obligate ourselves way down the road because we, we've got to remember that we have three other developments in this town, and if the economy kicks back and things start going, then we've got Centlow, we've got Rick Sant and Proctor's property, and we have the other property here, and we have some other people that have some lots that are going to be about developing. And so, and we've got to be careful that we don't reach one thing for one developer that we don't do for all the other developments.
Could we add some verbiage here that says something along the lines, we, the developer, voluntarily offered this, and at any future point, if the town, upon the town's reasonable request, we'll happily fall for this. Well, because that, to me, seems like it wouldn't commit any other developer to this same thing.
I, I'm, I'm thinking about the legislating aspect.
Okay.
If, if we paint ourselves as certain, we committed to the state that we're going to do certain things, but if we go to the state and say, look, we could not impact the people that live on Main Street, we couldn't make it a five lanes, we can't improve it to additional lanes, you're going to have to help us with an interchange because you're stifling economic development for the four developers because we're not going to allow them to build out any more than what Main Street can handle. So therefore legislators and UDOT will look at this and say, we have, we have a problem here we need to resolve. But if we try and fix it, but we don't even have the resource or the bonding capability, then we're, we're fooling ourselves because we're, we're just a very small budget.
Well, I don't think that this, what we're talking about, that's going to be in lieu of impact fees to be applied for a fund that we're going to give UDOT, that's, no way am I fooling myself that that's going to be sufficient to cover the cost of the interchange.
Well, some of the other towns put in over a million dollars, we don't, we never do that, nor would we want to commit upon even two million dollars.
Sure. I agree.
I didn't see it happen to you. Looking at an interchange, at the R T A meeting last week, Marley indicated that it wouldn't happen until maybe 2040, would leave even that close to being a compromise. For an interchange.
Yeah, and the only way that we get that is do a political issue. And that's really the bottom line, and that's how some of the projects go.
But does collecting this being in lieu of impact fee harm us in any way politically? Obviously the benefit that we have, it might not be a lot of money, but my guess is it's probably a several hundred thousand dollar project to improve Main Street into five lanes, but we then would have, whether it's 2020 or 2040, that we could contribute toward getting Leeds interchange moved up on to DOD and UDOT.
Well, the, the first thing that happens is, the moment an interchange is put in, UDOT indicated that they will give Main Street back to us as our road to maintain.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I just find it would be a waste of money, come in and develop Main Street to handle development, to increase it at the point, because it's a, it's a state road, we'd have to go to the state, and the state says, oh, great, you're going to widen it so we don't have to worry about an interchange.
Well, no, that's the whole point, is that we'd be collecting these fees not to widen it, but simply to be given to UDOT to assist with that.
But UDOT could come back and say, well, you've collected this money, we're not going to put an interchange, we go ahead and use that money and we'll match it with you to fix Main Street.
Oh.
Yes, we will. I, I just don't want to go down that path. I know how, I know how.
I'm supportive of what you're saying, Joe, I, I agree, and I, I think Grapevine has specifically said that they're willing to do that.
And I understand that.
And that's why this part is in the agreement. But it still, it still has to be that may. It may, it may happen to be more of a town in between, you know, the developer.
I mean, I'm just looking for something that would be along the lines of Grapevine voluntarily proposes, and if at any point in the future the town requests, we'll do this. Add that a little bit to our, the, the paragraph, paragraph seven, for section seven. I don't see how that really changes the legislative aspect, aspect, I don't see how commits this can do anything, it just is a further commitment from Grapevine that, hey, this is what we proposed, and we're definitely going to do it.
I'm not opposed if, if you can get Grapevine to say, yes, we will do this. I'm not opposed to that verbiage in there.
Because that's what I'm basing, a lot of my analyses of roads and at what point we have development, I'm basing on that verbal promise. And so I'd, I'd like to see that not necessarily set in stone, but Grapevine made that promise.
Yeah, but I, I don't mean to be the, the anchor that's stuck in the bottom of the ocean, not letting the ship do the port, but I'm just, I'd like to see an analysis, a business plan to say, this is what the potential dollars would be if we come in, and if we make a hoop lot, I don't know what that dollar amount is. I don't know if it's fifty thousand, a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand. If I could see what the dollar amount, and it would benefit the town, okay, but I, I have to see the plan, and I, I can't visualize at all what, what we're talking about in dollars, unless you have an idea what that would be.
We don't have an engineer's estimate, as we just mentioned a few minutes ago, on widening Main Street to five lanes, and even if we did, we wouldn't even need to, to broach that concept for decades in the future, and so the estimate would not be really based on anything realistic. And so, the attempt, and, and forgive me if this has been more of a, of a thorn than a rose, we, our intent was to have a rose be presented in a payment in lieu of. And, I mean, Joe, to your point about our willingness, I mean, that's why we put it in there, we're willing to contribute our share of impact, and that's why we put it in there. We also understand the town's hesitation about some of the political ramifications and things like that, and so, you know, maybe leaving the language as is with, of a, of a may, you know, not really setting it in stone, but maybe keeping the may language in there.
I, well, I understand.
Is appropriate so that we can start developing and seeing what the impact is, and then getting to something more concrete.
I understand the intent. I have a paragraph here, and, but at the same time, we're talking decades out in the future, and the entity that is Grapevine today could be an assign of Grapevine in the future that we're ready to make, it could be some, anybody else. And the verbal communication that we're having today could be long forgotten in the future. And that's why I'm asking, you know, because I'm basing a lot of my opinions and conclusions on this promise, I don't see the harm in saying, at any point the town asks us to do this, we'll do it, but no way are we committing to the town to do anything.
Maybe it would be wise, just as in the spirit of suggestion, maybe it would be a good thing for the town. I try to remember that UDOT meeting that was held here in the town hall a couple months ago, as I understand, the town, or UDOT really responds to what the town's interests are. I would wonder if UDOT, or the town could approach UDOT and say, hey, you know what, we understand that this Main Street through our town isn't owned by us, it's, it's a UDOT facility, but can we in our capital facilities plan identify it as a system road that we collect impact fees upon to, to, you know, contribute for matching monies to UDOT? It maybe, maybe, make it an impact fee issue instead of an in lieu of issue, and then, then, I don't know if that makes it, I don't know, I don't want to, I don't want to muddy the water. Our intent is to pay for our impact, and I appreciate the town's understanding that we're not the only landowner in town. I mean, there's, there's hundreds of acres of unimproved undeveloped land that once developed will be impacting Main Street. Even if we were to stay at quarter acre or ten thousand square foot lots, which are allowed under today's ordinances and things, and add the existing platid subdivisions, we already get to nearly eleven thousand trips on Main Street. That's not including land on the south end of Main Street that's still unimproved, land on the east side of Babylon Hill Road that's unimproved, land along Silver Reef Road that's in the town that's unimproved, that's not including any of those. If you add all those, we get to over almost thirteen thousand trips.
So, and we're going to be discussing later on this evening in the auditorium, the amount of trips, once they get to that, that point. And so at that point, we're going to like to convert that additional access to.
Impact fees would have a limit of six years. You know, it doesn't actually extend, and I don't think we're looking at anything happening in six years. I don't know that in lieu of funds would be held to that or not.
That's one of the, that's why we, why we proposed that.
That's probably the only reason it's in there, is to get around that share of plan. But that has to be, that has to be agreed upon by whoever the developer is, that's not something we can mandate. That's where we have to be very cautious about, you know, saying, okay, let's say that they, let's say that Grapevine will do that.
And that's pretty yet to be known.
I'm just proposing this. That's right, that's what I said. If you can get them to say they will, and take that, that may out of there, then that's something they agreed to. That's not something that they, the, an exaction that was put upon them, but wasn't put upon any other developer, they fully agreed to that, if you can get them to say will rather than may.
I, I just don't like twisting everything around, I like it clean cut because this project can be years down the road, no pun intended, but I, I just don't want to make commitments for long periods of time. And, and part of the reason is, if somebody wants to make money in a project, they're going to figure out the best way to do it to make profits. And if we get into setting up all these other things, we could actually drag projects along for such a long time, we could impede or impair some other developers' projects, and I don't want the town to do that because we've done something that creates a problem that we can't mitigate.
You know, the other problem maybe is, instead of trying to make a mandatory, is how would you force a certain dollar amount? Say, okay, we need five million prepaid, well, we can just say, no, we'll do five hundred. You know what I mean? There's no mechanism to, if it's not voluntary, you don't need what Mayor said, you need state law for dividends, collecting impact fees per state or per local roads. But that's the wrong, if you're putting a knee on the capitalism, then you get into how much you're going to require us to prepay. Let's, let's stop right there, and I think that's an appropriate place to stop. We are going. We are going to come out of this work session, it'll take like three minutes, and then we'll go into our, our regular meeting.